All right, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call please, Martin.
Board of Supervisors, Austin Datto.
Here.
Jim Morinetti.
Here.
Mark McDonald.
Here.
Township manager J R Mangan.
Here.
Assistant Township manager Andrew Hartwell.
Here.
Chief of Police Donald Kokas. Solicitor Michelle Crower.
Here.
Township secretary Marley Jordan here.
Thank you, Mark. At this time, we'll take public comments from the floor regarding agenda items only. Any comments on the agenda items? Having done, we'll move on.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just like to state for the record that during the public hearing held in January, a resident testified under oath that there was an alleged three thousand feet buffer imposed under law regulation, or maybe there was case law that purported to restrict the township from allowing other surrounding landowners within three thousand feet of his facility from using their property as residential because of potential dangers. After the hearing, GTN Law asked this resident to provide the township with the source of any such law, regulation, case law that purported to limit the township zoning powers or the property rights of others because of dangers which are posed by its operations, as opposed to laws and regulations that may limit that residence's operations or require that residence to maintain a certain buffer. To date, no information has been provided to the township or its solicitors with any citations or information to substantiate these claims, even though these were raised as an issue and were quoted to be case law and/or statutory law. Regardless of an abundance of caution, GTN Law, the township solicitor, engineer, fire code official, and staff researched laws and regulations governing gas storage tanks facilities. This research was in vain. The engineer made inquiry to an expert in the industry. The fire code official made specific inquiry to the regional DEP regulators who actually oversee such facilities. In fact, the solicitor's legal research found no such authority. Neither the regulated industry users nor the regulators themselves had ever heard of such a three thousand foot law, regulation rule, or even a guideline. In fact, the P A Code statute regarding outside storage tanks, section fourteen eight point one, does not contain any three thousand feet or three hundred feet rule telling other property owners what they can or cannot do. But instead, those rules only regulate where these gas tank owners much locate such tanks on their own property. As such, the issues raised at the January public hearing lacked merit in their entirities, and we would wanted to explain that to the board of supervisors, to staff, and along with to any interested residents.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that?
Thank you to the whole staff that researched that.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
That person who bought up that three thousand footer today, and he explained to me that it was a recommendation that could be stipulated by the township. And it's contrary to what you just said, but it was no happens. I couldn't find anything in the township zoning. I didn't look at state law. But he clarified that, so he backed off a little bit from his positions. So we threw it back to the township supervisors. But it doesn't look like there's even a guideline. There are some upper zones that talk about other criteria. But it's under two thousand, I'd say, right next to the, or almost on the oil company. They're very close. I mean, most of the three thousand. I just thought I'd throw that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Public Works report, Patrick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have the Public Works Roadmaster Report for you this evening. Other than that, I don't have anything pertinent other than we are stocking up on some salt. We're trying to meet our minimum requirement, but.
We have room for it.
We have something. I'll make you fit.
Okay.
Pat, you buy, and I know I ask this every year, you buy the salt on a winter, so it's not a calendar year. So you, you have to meet your order by April, like you can't carry it over into November.
That's correct. That's correct. One, I have to estimate by the, by March. That would be Co-Stars, and then Shaykaw, I have to put in the estimate by July. So and then that's for the winter starting this fall and in December and out in the last hallway through. Twenty-fourth here. And have we bought our minimum? Not yet. Not yet. Okay. We're getting there.
Does, uh, Co-Stars have a minimum also?
Excuse me, Jim.
Co-Stars, do they have a minimum also?
They do, they're sixty percent.
Sixty percent, okay.
I know. The Shaykaw, is he?
Eighty.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Roadmasters report. District one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cold patching on Nevillestown Road, Stewart Road, Front Street, Marguerite Street, First Street, Birmingham on Finkston Road and McCreeath Road, snow removal on all roads as needed, assisted with work in districts two and three.
District two, cold patching on Summer Park Drive, Park Lane, Stone Cypher Road, Pinkerton Run Road, Becker Road, and Forest Glen Road. Birmingham on Pinkerton Run Road, snow removal on all roads as needed and assisted with work in district one and three. District three.
Cold patching on Donaldson Road, Patrick Lane, Castle Road, Logan Road, still removal on all roads as needed, assisted with work in districts one and two.
I need a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to accept the Roadmasters' report. I'll second.
All favor.
Aye.
I'm looking. Department of Budget and Finance, Andrew.
Mr. Chairman. Budget and Finance, we've secured the surety bonds. Carter, Donald, myself, so those are not in effect. And we're working on the third bond for tax collector's office. In terms of the budget, the compensation for evidence that we will be implementing throughout the spring and this summer, hopefully going live in September. A D T, we've completed the payroll setup now. We're moving on to the H R module. Free payables, three eighty.
Okay.
Then that I'm happy.
Questions?
Sure. Thank you for your help with that. I came down and you helped me out with getting that all that. Everything's in there. What is, you know?
Yeah, your directions are really good.
Yeah, they're probably, you did a nice job. Thank you for your help with that.
Thank you. I have to ask, last two people come in, would you please sign in at the podium? If you didn't sign in. Other guy back there in the corner. Thank you. Recreation report, Darlene.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have my recreation report in front of you, just a couple of the highlights. We always trying to think of ways to add programs and things like that. We are actually adding two programs. One's a cricket clinic. It's going to be March eighteenth and nineteenth. To see if that goes well, then maybe we offer a cricket program. And we just also probably as of yesterday, secured that we're going to do a golf program, ages five to twelve. And we're going to see how that goes, it's like a six to eight week program, if they can do it indoor or outdoor. So it doesn't matter if it rains or, I want to say it snows, we're capable of doing it. Our next senior lunch is March eighth. Preschool, we'll finish our registrations. We are filled to the max. And presently, for our two-year-olds, we have six on the waiting list. For our three-year-olds, we have twelve on the waiting list. And for our four-year-olds, we have twenty-two on the waiting list, which all of those could add another class if we, if we could.
Twenty-two on a waiting list?
Wow. Did somebody shut down?
No, we've always had that many on the waiting list. It's, it's getting, I mean, we have a good reputation for preschool, so people want. And what's happening is we're getting a lot of the children who are older, their younger siblings are coming up. So we're fortunate that it's, it's doing very well.
Thank you.
We opened our registration for summer camp yesterday. I think as of today, we already have two registered. And I have the dates for a special program for two thousand twenty-three. And I just wanted to mention, March nineteenth through twenty-second is the C R P S conference. It's in Hershey this year. I will be intending that, but Steve and Nicole declined to go this year, so I'm just going to be going to represent us. That's all I have, if you have any questions.
How did the, I see under pals, they went to the Monster Jam.
They did, they actually went this best Sunday.
Oh, did that work out?
Besides wearing headphones, they, they have a blast, they love it.
Did it? Okay, good.
A lot of boys go, and then I just put out today for Disney on Ice, we got eighty tickets. And the last time I looked, we were at sixty-nine of eighty who's going to.
This is pals?
Disney on Ice, they love that. That's March fifth.
Wow. Many.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you.
And there's a lot from outside here, I noticed. They come and get, they kind of.
Right, there's people who come from like Moon and things like that. So it's not just North Fayette, but we're starting to get, like, we were starting to age out, so to speak.
Yeah.
Like, we're starting getting younger kids coming through again, so.
Good. Thank you.
And then just an update, I did put in here for the pals golf outing is being changed from September to August because we had to change the date, so it's going to be August twenty-sixth this year. Just a heads up.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
August twenty-sixth, right?
Darling, nice job to you and your staff. The, what, the programs that you have opened up and what you've done up at that community center has been amazing. So you guys should be very proud of yourselves. What you brought to this community has come a long, long way, and it doesn't go unnoticed, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I have a great staff, I really.
You do, and you're doing a great job. Give yourself some credit too, so thank you so much. That's amazing, that's all those kids going to, for us to even offer that and have that for the community and the people, the younger people that are working and have to have their kids there. It's good.
How about us, let's do a thank from the senior citizens. They do a great job with the citizens also.
Wait, I'm not a senior citizen yet, am I? How do you define it?
In May you will.
In May, yeah. Thank you, very, very nice.
Thanks, darling. Good report. Department of Community Development, Andrew.
Just preparing the board Q R written report. We have each answering questions.
If I looked at here, it'd probably be a dozen questions. What's new with Texas Roadhouse, they start yet?
Worked out there. I know they were waiting on some approvals from the county for falling.
They were supposed to move there today or do a footer, weren't they?
They, they've been done construction, I mean, they're out there doing work. But they're getting ready to.
Okay. Everybody know that Texas Roadhouse will be open where Max and Arm is located.
They're, they're taking the whole building down and putting a whole.
Down, it's ten down.
See, that's why I was a cop, I'm very observant. I was just at Sam's club, and I can't believe I didn't realize that.
You stay away from the hood because of traffic, that's our other problem.
Good thing I retired, right? Where'd that building go? Oh, sorry, guys. I have no question for you.
Any questions?
No.
I need a motion, please.
I will make a motion to accept the Department of Community Development's report.
I will second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye, motion. And let's, Chief Kokas is now with us this evening. So, Mark, we're giving the police report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief. Deja vu for me. Total calls for service were two thousand forty-eight calls. Well, they were very busy, over two thousand calls for the month. They had twenty-five arrests. They had four DUI arrests, twenty traffic citations, eleven non-traffic citations, and issued two total warnings. They investigated twenty-eight part-one crimes and twenty-three part-two crimes during the month of January two thousand twenty-three, and that completes the police report.
I will read the EMS report. Total emergency and non-emergency response is one twenty-nine. Response times by category and N F P A compliance. E D, I mean, E zero, twenty-two, E one, forty-three, E D plus one, sixty-five. A two, thirty-six, E three, thirty-two, and E four, response four. Mutual aid calls, calls given to Robinson EMS, station number eight-ten in North Fayette were seven. Calls given to call your township EMS, station seven-seventy, in North Fayette, two. And Northwest EMS requests a mutual aid for Valley, ambulance took twelve, South Ridge EMS took none, Robinson none, Washington County four, and three from Beaver County. That's EMS report, any questions, darling?
I have one.
Yes.
Would you please identify what the E, the E significance means in, in those calls?
The what calling?
Chief.
So you had, you said E one, E two, E three. I'm guessing it's the severity of the call.
It is. E zero is the most.
E zero, E one, E two, that's severity.
Okay, that's, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So looking at those times, that, those are pretty amazing response times.
Yes, they are.
Under seven minutes, six minutes and forty-seven seconds to get an ambulance, I don't know. Kind of happy that I have Northwest EMS in my community. They do a wonderful job. I know every second seems like it's an hour, and when you're waiting for an ambulance, that's, those are really good, very good response times.
Yeah.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the police EMS report.
I'll second.
All favor.
Aye.
I'm looking at. My report. Chief Garrett.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the month of January two thousand twenty-three, there were thirty far calls in the township, broken down twenty-six were in the North Fayette area, three of Dale area, one Surgeon area, zero McDonald area. The North Fayette Fire Department actually answered thirty-four calls. Four of those were mutually out of township calls. And as I had mentioned to you last month, we're still waiting on some parts for our area ladder to be put back into complete full service. I understand that the parts had to come out of Germany, so they were waiting, and they wouldn't ship them. They would not ship them piecemeal, they were going to ship everything at once. So our hope and our understanding is that the parts should be in the states by the end of the week, and hopefully we'll get it in the shop either end of this week or beginning of next, and we'll get to work on it. So, but we're at the mercy of the shippers. That's all I have at this point.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the fire department report as read. I'll second.
All favor.
Aye.
I'm looking at. Andrew, you have anything, Assistant Township Manager?
Yes, and so, in all's direction, we've been broadcasting the meetings since the beginning of the year. We're looking for some direction from you guys on if that's something you wish to. If so, then we can have staff look and do a permanent solution. What will you do?
My thoughts on it? I think it's a good idea. It allows people to listen in if they can't attend in person. I think the only challenge that we have right now is asking questions. And I think that's where we have to get a policy that if you want to ask the question, you have to be. You have to be here or you have to submit it a day, you know, whatever many hours in advance, you know, written. I think that's, I don't know, that's kind of where my, my head's going, it's.
Yeah, we should make that a policy. Did you decide to do that? Do you have any thoughts on it?
I think we should continue to do it, I think it's just being transparent, yeah, that's nice, that's good, I think it's a good idea. Okay.
Okay with it? Okay. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. Anything else?
Thank you.
You are, you have anything?
Yeah, a couple of things. So staff, myself, Andrew, Mike, Sean Winger, we met with HK Equipment. We're moving forward, I know we had been talking about this over the last few months. That area where HK Equipment is kind of a dead end. We have Castile Drive and Scott Drive, and the fact that most of their equipment is across the road because their property is such a parcel, and Charlie also from.
Excuse me one minute, JR. I'm sure there's people out here that have no idea what we're talking about.
Well, I'm trying to explain, so we have a business that is in North Fayette on Castile and Scott Drive, and it's kind of an isolated, their equipment is mostly across the road, and we're working on that vacation of the.
You know where Pit Stop is and Hum Goods, is the area we're talking about.
So we're in the next steps, and the good thing is HK Equipment is now looking to buy the building next to them that they're currently renting, so the parcel's even growing, and there's a vacant parcel which is prime for development. So that's what we were updated today. I met their attorney, Mike, and Charlie, we talked about the details. So it's kind of a good thing, if, I, I believe it's good we work with HK here to help them with that vacating of the road path, and it's looked at at their excavator, was there the surveyor, everything's on the go. Fact is, I think we work with them, we're looking for another business to build down there, so that's always a blessing.
I have a question, JR.
Yeah.
What happened to that property that goes up towards the hotel then?
It can be accessed from Scott Road.
It could be accessed from Scott.
Yeah.
And then nothing will affect that.
No. They can actually, we'd have to look at the terrain, but it might be, that also can be accessed from, help me out with the names. Southern. Southern. Yeah, and that Southern's private road, although it's in Robinson, it would come over. I mentioned it today.
Road?
Southern's Township Road. It's Robinson Township, okay, not the end, that, not that last.
It's a, it's a township right after the first quarter, then it's private.
That's it, the second half is.
All right, thank you.
So, you know, they say the wheels of the Lord slow in turning, well, the situation on Montour Height, Montour Church, where they were going to benefit from the development at the end, and we were going to have the traffic impact, it's now, we're looking at the, you know, benefit of the development, and they will have to deal with the traffic. So I met with Frank Piccolino Monday, and he's good. No updates, by the way, on that other development I'm talking about. It's kind of stagnant, but I mentioned to him that we might be doing something on that, and so we can work with him, but the main thing is we're moving forward with HK, and it sounds optimistic. Number two, I have Kelly Kane from Autism Carrying Center, our local resident here that's done wonders for the autism community in pals. I, I have her speaking at Pal, I have her speaking at A Long Thursday night. I coordinated with Jason Davidak and Crystal Sickles. We got her now spreading the word. The, the local girl in North Fayette that started this program is now spreading it throughout the other communities in Allegheny County, so. And we're working on getting her to a cog meeting also.
Yeah.
So she's excited.
What night, Thursday night she'll be?
Yeah, I kind of, I was surprised their agenda was that cool already, but Jason, I said, Jason, can you please sneak her in at some point? I mean, it's a basically, what was that, a forty-minute video? I mean, so.
Yeah.
I said, I'll be willing to do the introduction or whatever, so Thursday night, that, that opening night, Stephen's a pal who used to do it, like, that used to be dedicated to district earning, and it's kind of open now, and he goes, we need something that night, so it looks good, and the nice thing is, show up time to question and answers, show up around. I just thought I'd make a.
That's legitimate. I know we, they were, we were talking about, you know, having something, but they wanted to have a panel with different, and I think it was just hard to match what she does with other panelists, and just have her own thing is perfect, because it's really, to do that videos, keep.
I told him, I said, you, this is not a typical, I mean, we've been to enough conferences before, we talk about zoning, we talk about light, we talk about issues with police department, it's business. But this is, like, when I saw the video here, I was amazed, I learned a lot. And I thought, this will be, this will be really cool. And I think what will happen is she'll get her word out to other communities and probably attend their meetings also, so she should be able to. Hopefully this works, she'll be traveling the county with the other residents and getting into their police departments and their departments too, so.
Well, now you guys go to the cog meeting Thursday, I'll talk to them about it.
Yeah, perfect, yeah, if you could set her up maybe for the next one, I could.
Oh, see, couldn't do a lunchtime with this one.
Oh, he's got.
The state candidate.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, that's his. And then Bob and I met with Parks and Rec staff earlier on to talk about the incentives. Obviously, they are doing much better as far as increasing programs, so that went over well, and then we got some feedback from them, and I'll have to talk to you. It's like, we have a storage issue up there, and Pat and I, and, and folks there are talking about maybe doing a shed out behind the building somewhere, so since it's a capital purchase, we'll, we'll talk more in depth, but we're, we're looking to do something to expand the storage up there, because the programs are growing, and it would be nice to free some space up so they have more room, so we'll talk about that. And finally, after, how many years has the center been up since two thousand fifteen? So the sink is now going to be enlarged, so Ernie and Jimmy Rapjack and Pat and I have all discussed how we're going to make that sink bigger, and it's going to be affordable. We have some talented people here that are going to do the, the counter work for us, so we're going to get a bigger sink so we can finally wash something other in our hands.
It's very much appreciated, very much.
So you're doing such a good job on making sure your sink gets enlarged. Yeah, so that's all.
That's right. That's right, go on, is it kitchen sink?
Yeah, everything but the kitchen sink. So, all right, that's all I have.
JR, I have one question. Sutherland Drive.
Yeah.
Are there, or maybe this is for Andrew, are there still buildable parcels in North Fayette at the end of the?
Yeah.
Yeah. For those of you in the audience, Sutherland is where IHOP is, you know, where IHOP is up by Costco. So we have, at the end of that street is in North Fayette, believe it or not, the way the line runs, am I correct, guys? And it would be wonderful to see another, we could see like a nice high-rise hotel go in there or something. Wouldn't that be nice?
And we think that's part of McGurk, that's why I was asking, if you look at the name, I think it's the same outfit that did Forest City or some.
Years ago, like thirty years ago, they had, they had talked, Kevin, you might remember, I don't know if anybody, about putting a big hotel at, at that.
Yeah.
Remember that?
Yeah, but even before, even after that, we had it just, what, five years ago?
Yeah, there's been talk.
Yeah, there's been, people have been, they've thought about it.
Little known fact to the residents that that side over there by Costco, we have North Fayette, we have parcels at the end of there that can be developed, so.
Eight or ten years ago, they talked about assisted living facility, yeah.
Right.
That was a great plan.
And it's always been, there's very little impact in North Fayette.
Yeah, they stopped it with the fact that we would have had to enter from Robinson Township, and they wouldn't approve it.
Well, that turned out.
But now they have Sutherland Drive, so that could change.
Yes.
Very good, thank you, JR.
Yes, you're welcome.
Supervisor comments, Bob?
Yeah, just two things. First, Darlene, I wanted to compliment you, I was at a meeting with other townships on the Allegheny League of Municipalities, and one of them was talking about how they were approached about voting a bond, to expand their recreation department, and he said, you know, our recreation department, they can't even cover their costs. And it's a very well-run municipality in the North Hills, and said, oh, it took ours a couple of years, but they got there, and you know, just a kudos to you and the team there that, you know, you guys do, not only do you offer all the programs that all the residents love, but you do it without help from the taxpayers, which is a win for everybody. So thank you, I know it's not easy, and you're obviously one of the few that can do it. Second thing, I had the opportunity to meet with Alex Devaux, he is a voice scout who was working on his citizenship in the community mayor badge, and as part of that, he needed to meet with an elected official at the local level and bring up an issue that was important to them. And his issue had to do with baseball fields and turfing the infield. And he put a little presentation together, and I will share it with everybody. I wanted to give you a heads up to expect that in your email, and, you know, he put some costs together and what it could save us in not having to maintain the infield. I did explain to him, we have our, our hands full this year with the Henke Farms Park and everything we're rolling out there, but certainly something we can look at. Those were my two items. Normally, this time of year, Pat, I'm telling you, tell the guys, keep up the great work, I know they're tired, but I'm sure at this point, they, they're itching for some overtime, and I'm sure we'll get it around St. Pat's Day for the, St. Pat's snow that we always get, but, yeah.
I will, can I add, can I spin off, so, so the night we were sitting here at the last public hearing was the January twenty-third, and the phones went off in West Allegheny, it had a two-hour delay. Pat said the guys couldn't wait, they were actually ready to attack that storm that never happened, like, the guys were, believe it or not, they're kind of like itching to, and, but anyhow, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, thanks, Bob. The only thing I have, what do you mean, the pickleball? Is there still a big demand on that that we can't fulfill, or?
I mean, we allow them right now, Monday through Friday, from. I mean, we allow them right now, Monday through Friday from eight AM to ten AM.
Is that enough for? Now, we had talked about.
I mean, you told me about that league whatever, but no one ever approached me about it.
She never called?
Mm-mm.
Hey, I I'll have to try and see if I have her number.
I mean, and then actually, now that you say that, one of, um, the seniors, uh, at the last lunch, and his, uh, Pat, his name is, said that they now have pickleball nets. Where you, you roll it out and you can play. So if that's the case, then, um, we might be able to throw instead of doing anything to the tennis courts, just roll them out and let them play.
You know?
Cause right now, like, they have two courts, Monday through Fridays, we make the pen. Um, if there's nothing going on, then we say, hey, can we stay a little longer? We say yes. But, um, I haven't had anybody else say, like, you know, upset that they're not playing.
Also, you mean you could roll that out in the middle of the parking lot and play?
Mm-hmm. I, I don't know, parking lot, but yeah, that's what they, I haven't looked into it yet to see what it is. He told me he was gonna, um, you know, I told him I'd look into it, and he's gonna look into it and we'll get back.
Okay.
Cause they want, um, they want nets for outside that they said they would fundraise for, but I haven't seen anything.
That'd be for the tennis courts.
Right, because we can't bring the nets that we have. Already falling apart. I already have them taped and welded and, and they're, they're, they're ready to go. So I might have to repurchase those, but.
We are playing pickleball outside because they retaped the course. The, the net was just a little higher.
And when I tell you a little, it's.
Yeah, so, yeah, you have the outside prepared. They've been playing.
But if I can get these mats, then they can, or look at them anyway. I don't know how pricey they are, but I haven't anybody come to me and say, you know, like, we don't have time. They might do that when it gets time to.
That's what I'm wondering.
In the summer. But then again, they can also go outside when it comes to the summer. So.
They should have a pickleball tournament and then have, you know, like, then, didn't the baseball team just do something like that with, uh, up at celebrations with, uh?
Cornhole.
Cornhole.
Yeah.
As a fundraiser, they had a cornhole tournament.
And.
What's the fastest-growing sport in the nation? Did you not know that?
Did not know that. Don't you know that? You need a fence around that? No. Fence around the court? You wouldn't be chilling, you wouldn't be chasing the pickleball?
You just need lines in the net and, you know, the different balls. There's ins, inside balls and outside balls, and most of them bring their own paddles. It's interesting that the people who started, you'll hear that they're advanced, and then they came to me and said, well, can we make the beginners stay over there while we're over here? So I have to smile when they say, I'm like, sure, we'll work it out for you.
I do start traveling.
I hear it's a lot different and tougher for tennis players to play pickleball.
Well, have you seen some of the, some of the pro tennis players that are playing?
Yeah.
I haven't played yet. Well, it's gonna be harder because you have to stand more, like you're squatting. Yeah, I don't know if my knees are gonna handle that, but.
It's easier than tennis with that. I can't play tennis, but I can play pickleball.
Yeah, you play it?
Yeah, I'm not as crazy. It's like groups all over the place. I think probably kick my rear end, but yeah.
The fastest-growing sport in the nation.
I know, I've heard.
I would get an ad every email. Every time they would send me something. You're an intense group. Very, yes, they are.
Oh, good. Okay, nothing else. Mark?
I think other than a good job by all of our employees, once again, I seem like a broken record every month telling you, telling all of you that. But we are very proud and happy to have all of you on our staff. Thank you for doing a wonderful job for us and the residents of this community. So, yeah.
Thank you. Payroll and invoices. I'll make a motion to approve the payment and payroll and invoices as listed.
I'll second it.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion. Eric. Approval of the meeting minutes. Call for a motion to approve the minutes for January tenth, two thousand twenty-three public care, January tenth, two thousand twenty-three information and general affairs meeting, and the general, January twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three board of supervisors meeting. I'll send move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
I'm a car. Old or unfinished business. Call for a motion to adopt ordinance number five oh seven. An ordinance amending the official zoning map to change the zoning classification of a portion of tax parcel ID four ninety-three dash N dash two from, uh, industrial one, or I one light industrial to R two suburban residential. And we will have questions or comments on this. Anybody from the force? Dan, state your name, please.
Eric Munstra, I'm at the two eighty-five Whittengate Road. I have to say that the Whittengavers, the residents of Whittengate Road are opposed to the development of the Sycamore Ridge, uh, higher density proposal, uh, offered by, uh, Bill Pion. And, um, we would prefer to have a much lower density. We're opposed to the I one to the R two zoning change because we would like to keep it, um, light industrial. Uh, recently, an option for Mr. Pion may be to keep that area light industrial and develop that property as a light industrial property and not as residential property. We still feel for reasons, uh, but forth in the addition that we put out, uh, last year that, um, the general infrastructure is too far behind, uh, and that would be too much of a load on traffic on the road, um, and on the general atmosphere of Whittengate. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Any other comments?
Thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
I, I will make a motion to adopt ordinance number five oh seven. I will second.
Roll call, please, Martin.
Bob Dadda?
Yes.
Jim Marzetti?
Yes.
Mark Adon.
Yes.
That's motion carried. It's now, is, I believe, turns this over to the state.
Yes, so, and just, that development still has to get approvals from the state for PennDOT. This is not, all this was, was changing zoning.
We did not.
From light industrial to residential, and to be honest, as I thought about everything, I, the more and more I think about this, we really should not have light industrial by our schools. Um, and that is the biggest factor for me is that's so close to McKee. I, I would not want to see something like a petrochemical plant go in there with McKee Elementary right there. Um, I understand that some people may prefer industrial development over residential, but in that corridor right by McKee Elementary, just like right by Donaldson Elementary, we shouldn't have industrial facilities. It, it, you know, we shouldn't encourage more industrial facilities. Um, yeah.
So I, I only have one comment to make. For those of you in the audience this evening, this is something that this board has toiled over this, and all this is, is a zone. Okay, I, I'm the new guy on the board, so I, I, this explained to me. All this is a zoning, changing it, please step in if I step, go aside, guys. Just changing this to residential, and how many lots more is it creating with, with this change, Andrew? By changing this to residential, what happened? Seven? Okay, so it's seven more as opposed to the light industrial like Bob said, but this is something that we took very seriously, that we gave a lot of thought. I know that I, you know, just thinking, what's the best? What's the best? This decision, I feel, I can speak for myself, and I'm sure there's board members next to me, we feel it is, is something that we did for the, uh, we'd never do anything, obviously, to harm the community, but it's, it what didn't go without us thinking and considering what all of you had said. So for whatever it's worth, you know, we understand. I, I grew up in Osgo myself, and so did JR, so we, we understand what, what we, what we have to, uh, what we have to, uh, keep our eyes on, and it, it didn't go, it wasn't an easy decision to make.
My comment? Whittengate is a state road. North Branch is the state road. Double Time Road is the state road. McKee Road is the state road. That's who the developer has to deal with. Plus, the DEP. The, the landscape on it, trees, and the creek and a storm runoff. That's up to the state DEP. So that's where we had moved on from making it an R two. Any other questions? Yes, Sterling, please.
So, so if the state, she decides not to approve the Whittengate side of the development, would the development for the, for that particular, um, area coming onto McKee Road, is that the only, only development that will occur?